You can do the pledge of allegiance for us, sir.
Then we'll do a walkout after this time.
Ask everybody to please rise so we can salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we're gonna actually suspend the rules. We did put some presentation together for them and also the chief was gonna swear in Captain Betts. Gentleman Calvin Brown will call off your name as a...
Chief Keith Hope. Lieutenant Paul McCabey, McCabey here?
Yep.
Lieutenant?
Yeah, keep going.
Richard Lau. Carlos Vega Junior, congratulations. Gustafa Mizra?
Mizra, yeah.
Mizra, I'm sorry. Joseph Baker Santiago?
Yes.
Congratulations. No more?
Huh?
No more.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, we appreciate you giving us your time and coming to present the colors before the city council. Thank you, gentlemen. And at this time, I'll call on Chief Keaty Holton.
Thank you, Mr. President, distinguished members of the city council. Very proud day for first our honor guard who represented the city at the Celtics. First time our honor guard was at a major sporting event and as you can see the way they look, they promote honor honoring our flag, our country and all of us who they represent and serve every day. So I do wanna thank them, I was very proud that night to be there at the Celtics game to witness it. And on that same note, even more proud to have a colleague, a dear friend, someone who is one of the brightest minds in law enforcement, is an investigator in so many realms of policing, to be finally officially ceremoniously sworn in, Captain David Betts. I'd just like to say a few things about Dave. Dave's been a police officer for over thirty-five years, he started with the Harvard University Police, Arlington Police, and he's been on Chelsea since nineteen ninety. Rose through the ranks rather quickly, making his mark, most notably in criminal investigations. Dave has a knack, he has a quality that most people don't have, to be a detective, which I was since two thousand and seven until my swearing in, I relied on Dave, who was the lieutenant in the bureau, continuously for guidance, to know how to run an investigation, know how to use his creative mind to catch the person we were looking for, so no one better than Dave. And I think Dave would even say even more important is his personal, you know, exposure to and using something that was tragic in his life, the death of his son, to promote mental health and suicide awareness. It's all on Dave, if you see our police cruisers, we have the nine-eight-eight symbol, which is the National Suicide Crisis Hotline, which actually rings to our colleagues at Not Suffer Community. As Dave has always said, if you have that extra time, if you have time to talk, anything you can do could change something from really horrible to potentially save someone's life. And Dave's done this, Dave's a national leader on this, he's not just a leader in investigations, he's a leader in promoting mental health for all. If you've seen up Route One, he got the billboards that are on our cruisers, the fire department is putting him on their fire apparatus, thanks to counsel, President Counsel Leo Robinson and the board, they promote it, promoting it, we're using it on ramps to the Tovin. So we're really doing a marketing campaign and it's all because of Dave and it's in honor of his son David. So I would call Dave and I guess Janice, Cameron and Kayla, if you're gonna come up too, do the honoring of pinning your dad and your husband's badge on.
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
That I will faithfully and impartially?
Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties?
Incumbent upon me?
Incumbent upon me?
As captain of the Chelsea Police Department?
As captain of the Chelsea Police Department?
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities?
And understanding?
And understanding?
Agreeably?
Agreeably?
To the rules and regulations?
To the rules and regulations?
Of the Constitution?
Of the Constitution?
And laws of the Commonwealth?
And laws of the Commonwealth?
The Charter?
The Charter?
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea?
And the ordinances of the City of Chelsea?
So help me God?
So help me God?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanna read the recognition of the letter citation that the men received before you take off. You just need your patience for one minute. Recognition of certification that this Chelsea City Council hereby present this certification, this certificate, this esteemed representation of the City of Chelsea to the officers that we tonight that we give these to, on the members of the Chelsea Police Department honor guard who presented colors at the Boston Celtics home game Friday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, making the first time in Chelsea history?
Yes.
History that we were able, we as a city, were able to present this guy at a professional sporting event. Thank you for representing us as Chelseaans and thank you for representing your department and the word and the honor today belongs to you, thank you again.
We'll take a quick two-minute break if you wanna take a couple pictures or photos or anything and get your pieces.
Are they gonna take pictures? Chief? They're taking pictures over here, if you guys wanna take pictures. Let the city council get behind them since we're here, council members.
Thank you. All right. I gotta tip, I gotta report. Waiting for Damali. She over there?
Yep.
All right, we're gonna get started. All right, we're back in session. Clerk will take the attendance.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent.
Absent.
Counselor Tenary Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Recupero? Counselor Vado?
She's here.
Counselor DeJesus?
Here.
Counselor Hubbleburg? Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Nine members present?
Do we have a quorum?
We do.
Okay. Next order of business?
We have memorials and celebratory resolutions. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the city council for Earth Day. Where, whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April twenty-second, nineteen seventy, and whereas the late Senator Gaylord Nelson, the founder of Earth Day, called on the people of the United States to hold elected officials accountable for failing to adequately protect the health of people and the natural environment. And whereas, after witnessing years of environmental neglect, millions of Americans of all ages, walks of life and political affiliations gathered in cities across the nation on the first Earth Day to demand basic protections for our planet and to commit to leaving behind a healthier world for the next generation. And whereas, Earth Day unites people who have been fighting against oil spills, polluting factories and power plants, raw sewage and toxic dumps, the loss of wildlife and other environmental ills. And whereas, Earth Day is an annual event created to promote environmental citizenship and action year-round. And whereas, the first celebration of Earth Day was the largest environmental grassroots event ever held at the time and is widely credited with launching the modern environmental movement. And whereas, the voices of inaugural Earth Day participants galvanized in unparalleled period of legislative and grassroots activity that changed the way we interact with the environment, leading to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency, the passage and passage of legislation such as the Clean Water Act, the Clean Air Act and the Endangered Species Act. And whereas, by nineteen ninety, Earth Day was celebrated globally with two hundred million people in one hundred and forty-one countries participating in Earth Day events. And whereas, new and continuing challenges, including climate change, polluted oceans and waterways, loss of forests, wetlands and other wildlife habitats, reinforce the need for adequate protections for the air we breathe, the water we drink, the land we inhabit and the animals we live alongside. And whereas, the American Public Health Association declared twenty seventeen the Year of Climate Change and Health because changes to our climate are harming Americans' health and safety, including respiratory allergies and asthma. And whereas, Earth Day reaffirms our national responsibility and the global effort to combat climate change and protect our planet. And whereas, Earth Day reminds us of the need to expand environmental and climate literacy, not only to strengthen environmental and climate protections, but also to accelerate development of green technologies and creation of green jobs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council wished to go on record so as to recognize April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three as Earth Day in Chelsea and would like to encourage our residents to participate in the community programs offered so as to make Chelsea a better place to live in.
Counselor Vado moves to adopt this shenanigans under suspension, seeing no objections. Next order.
Next order of business, we have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the city council for Administrative Professionals Day. Whereas during World War Two, there was an increased need for skilled administrative personnel, particularly in the United States. And whereas, the National Secretaries Association was formed to recognize the contributions of secretaries and other administrative personnel to the economy and to support their personal development. And whereas, the association's name was changed to the International Association of Administrative Professionals in nineteen ninety-eight. And whereas, the organization's vision is to inspire and equip all administrative professionals to attain excellence. And whereas, the first National Secretaries Week was organized in nineteen fifty-two in conjunction with the United States Department of Commerce. And whereas, the success of every major corporation, organization, small business and governmental agency, as well as cities and towns, depends on the professionalism, ethical standards, attention to detail and diligent adherence to expectations of excellence imbued by their administrative personnel. And whereas, administrative professionals in the City of Chelsea and worldwide play a crucial role in the development of day-to-day tasks, programs, meetings and singular world-changing events by providing the resources and support necessary to successfully carry out all functions in a wide array of entities. And whereas, respect is to be given to the administrative professionals who often work tirelessly behind the scenes and are worthy of accolades. And whereas, Administrative Professionals Day highlights the important role of administrative professionals who are individuals from diverse backgrounds in all sectors of the modern economy in the City of Chelsea and worldwide. And whereas, Administrative Professionals Day is on the Wednesday of Administrative Professionals Week, which is the last full week of April. Now therefore be it resolved that Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, this Chelsea City Council commemorates the observance of Administrative Professionals Day.
Move to adopt unanimity under suspension, if there are no objections, can I speak on it briefly?
Yes, you have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge our two administrative support members in the office, Cliff Cunningham and Jessica Carmenati and obviously all the folks that came before. A lot of people, sometimes I get phone calls from other counselors and they're like, "Well, have your staff call my staff," and I'm like, "Well, we don't have, I don't have my own staff." There's two people in that office that are doing the work for all of us and I just wanted to make sure that we lift our silent heroes who do a lot of the work behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order of business?
Next order of business, we have a resolution introduced by Counselor Recupero for Armenian Genocide Remembrance. Whereas, from nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three, while World War One raged around the world, the government of the Ottoman Empire systematically planned and carried out the mass murder of approximately one point five million Armenians. And whereas, the first mass murders began on April twenty-fourth, nineteen fifteen, when the Ottoman government arrested more than two hundred and fifty Armenian leaders in Constantinople, the capital city of the Ottoman Empire. And whereas, prominent educators, clergy, writers, lawyers, intellectuals and other public leaders were subsequently arrested and executed. And whereas, most adult Armenian males were either forcibly constricted into the Ottoman Army or executed. And whereas, large numbers of women, children and elderly men were either executed outright or summarily deported to the Syrian desert, where those who survived dehydration and starvation faced attack by government-backed gangs. And whereas, in May of nineteen fifteen, the allied powers consisting of Great Britain, France and Russia issued a declaration condemning the Ottoman Empire for committing crimes against humanity, the first time that phrase was used in international diplomacy. And whereas, by nineteen twenty-three, the mass extermination and accompanying atrocities resulted in the virtual elimination of the Armenian population and its culture in Asia Minor. And whereas, historians cite the Armenian genocide as a forerunner of later genocidal measures, including the Holocaust, the Killing Fields in Cambodia, the Bosnian genocide, the Rwandan genocide and Darfur. And whereas, President Biden became the first president of the United States to label the mass killings a genocide when he formally commemorated the one hundred and seventieth anniversary of the start of the Armenian genocide. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, recognize April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three as Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day in the City of Chelsea in memory of the victims of the Armenian genocide and in honor of the survivors and their descendants and urge all residents of Chelsea to join in solemn remembrance.
Seeing no objections, so moved, you have the floor, Counselor.
Many, many years nobody recognized Armenian genocide. I know because of my grandfather back in World War One. My grandfather would have been a hundred and thirty years old now, whatever old he was, he would have been... And he used to tell me stories and that was the first genocide. When the world allowed that to happen to the Armenians, then you could follow within here how many other genocide came. And it was time that finally a president recognized that it was a genocide and the Armenians were always a great part of Turkey. They were genocide and got rid of, all because of their religion belief, because they were the Christians. They were the first Christians in a world where they didn't fit. They were highly educated people, so it's time that we recognize them too. What the world recognizes is that they were the first genocide and after that everyone else came. So if we allow stuff to continuously happen like this, our world would be a rotten place for all of us to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Next order of business?
Yes.
We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Robinson and all members of the city council for Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. Whereas, the month of May is Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. And whereas, the month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the U.S. on May seventh, eighteen forty-three. And whereas, on May tenth, eighteen sixty-nine, Golden Spike Day, the first transcontinental railroad in the United States was completed with significant contribution from Chinese immigrants. And whereas, in nineteen seventy-nine, President Jimmy Carter proclaimed the week beginning on May fourth, nineteen seventy-nine as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week, providing an opportunity for the people of the United States to recognize the history, concerns, contributions and achievements of Asian and Pacific Islander Americans. And whereas, from nineteen ninety through nineteen ninety-two, Congress designated and President George H.W. Bush proclaimed the month of May as Asia Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas, as of two thousand and twenty, twenty-three million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders account for seven percent of the population of the United States. And whereas, over two million Asian and Pacific Islander Americans worked on the front lines of the COVID-nineteen pandemic in healthcare, law enforcement, transportation and other essential sectors. And whereas, since March twenty-twenty... And whereas, since March twenty-twenty, there have been a, there's been a dramatic increase in reports of hate crimes and incidents against those of Asian descent. And whereas, on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, the Senate passed legislation condemning hate crimes directed at Asian Americans amid a sharp increase in discrimination and violence against Asian communities in the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby proclaims May as Asian Pacific Islander American Month in the city of Chelsea, and condemns and denounces any and all anti-Asian sentiment in any form.
Counselor Taylor moves to adopt this shenanigans under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved. Counselor Recupero, you want to speak on the matter?
I'm glad this is back. They should be recognized too. I have a granddaughter that is of Filipino descent, and she's the most wonderful granddaughter I have. I shouldn't say that because I got so many of them, but she's very wonderful. So it's nice that they recognize them too. Thank you.
Next order is public speaking. Seeing that there's nobody here for public speaking, we will close that portion of the meeting.
Next order of business, we have approval of the minutes for the council meeting of April tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Counselor Brown moves to accept and file under suspension. Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next order of business, we have accepting of the minutes for the special meeting from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Counselor Brown moves to accept and file a communication under suspension. Seeing no objections.
Next order of business, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a communication received from the Parent Professional Advocacy League proclaiming May seventh through thirteenth Children's Mental Health Week. Can you read it?
Yeah, please read it for the record.
Whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas, good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week shines a light on this important matter. And whereas, research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health conditions among children and youth and the-
Okay, seeing no objections, so moved. You have the floor, Counselor.
Resolution goes out for just the awareness, so we could be aware of this here, and also the increase in public that we'll be able to understand the mental illness that we deal with. We were just in a hearing when we were talking about our school annual budget, and that was one of the sources of, we was focusing on. So I hope that we really realize how important this is, particular now, pre-COVID, that a lot of kids, a lot of teenagers, you know, just haven't come out the shell, and we should be more sensitized to be able to offer some support and care and thoughts for them. Appreciate it, Mr.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order, next communication.
Next communication, we have a communication received from the Chelsea Youth Commission. Dear Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the Chelsea Youth Commission, I am ready to express our eagerness and enthusiasm in the process of further developing its skate park at Creekside Common Park in Chelsea. CYC members, both past and present, have been continuous supporters in the creation of a designated space for skaters, and we are truly grateful for the effort residents, board members, and the Department of Housing and Community Development have put in to help this idea become a reality for Chelsea. Thank you for allowing the voices of youth to be heard and for taking their thoughts into consideration. We assure that this new space will socially benefit the entirety of Chelsea. We hope that you will continue to listen to the opinions of youth around the Chelsea community as the project develops and to seek perspectives that young people can provide for any future projects. If there is any way the Chelsea Youth Commission can offer their help, please do not hesitate to reach out to us. Sincerely, Ariana Perdomo, Chair, Chelsea Youth Commission.
Counselor De Jesus. Seeing none, that's Counselor Vido.
Next order of business, we have a communication received from the Traffic and Parking Commission approving items number three and twelve from their April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
Counselor Recupero.
Accept and file the communication if there's no objection.
Under suspension.
Actually, I have a question. It's just agenda number, agenda item number three. It's a temporary approval of five parking spots for one year. I understand, it sounds to me like that's the construction. I just want some clarity. That's the construction that's happening at the Garden Cemetery?
Yes.
But isn't a year, like, all year long, they're going to take up five parking spots? That seems a bit excessive.
I don't know what, I can't, I don't know what the timeframe on it was, for one year.
It seems like, it seems a bit excessive, considering the parking in that area.
Yeah. Also, I'd like to complete the work going on at the cemetery that's going to take a bit. Counselor Recupero.
I like, I'm, I'm, I'm still curious. The meeting was October fourth, and we got it twenty days, I mean, it was April fourth, and we got it twenty days later. Yeah, ten, I know. But we received it twenty days later to vote on it.
But weren't you at that meeting with me? Weren't you at the same meeting I was at?
That, that meeting, there was also something else I requested. They sent me the paper, and they said at this meeting that they were going to paint stripes, and then it's not appearing on this thing.
Because it wasn't probably approved.
I was at that meeting, you were here too. Remember, they said they were going to put stripes. Why did they put it here?
I think, Mr. President, I think I would, can we send this to a subcommittee, and can we have a subcommittee with the Traffic Parking Commission? There seems to be a lot, I feel like we, we get the finalized, we say decide, but I don't have enough information here. And I think taking five parking spots in an area that's so densely populated was such, it seems a bit excessive for an entire year. I'm thinking in the winter. It seems, I, it just seems, they're not doing work in the winter in the cemetery.
So you want to offer amendment to send it to conference?
Can we send it to conference and invite the Traffic Parking Commission or the chair, however that could work, to come and meet with us? I think, we keep getting these questions that come up in these council meetings with respect to this board. I think it's only fair for us to have a conversation.
Mr. President, would this be different from the order that was already submitted, requesting a meeting with them? I'm just wondering.
I'm all for it. I think we need-
Well, we can combine them if there was a-
Yeah, because this is specific action. I think, I think, I think we need to have a, a conversation.
Yes.
Subcommittee.
Yep, Subcommittee on Conference. Counselor Brown.
If I'm unable to attend this meeting, if it occurs, I just would ask the board if they could just check and see if they're going to act for twenty-four hours, stay if this park these five parking spaces. Now, it's one thing if they're working and improving our community over there, moving vehicles, but if they're going to have them parked there for twenty-four hours, for a year, that's an excessive amount of time, and I wouldn't do favor of it.
Agreed. So it's not adopted, it's, it's not approved, right?
It was approved at the Traffic Commission.
But we have to, but we, but we have it. Can we vote to send it back pending our subcommittee on conference?
What's your amendment? You, you want it to-
I want to know what I can do, Mr. Chair. So, so I understand that they send it to us, and we have forty-five days to act on it, right, or to vote on it. My question is, I don't want to, I don't want it to go forward because I want to have a conversation. So what, what is the best course of action that I can do right now to make sure it doesn't get adopted and that we can ensure that we have this conversation?
Yes.
If we can ask the manager, I don't know when the work's going to start. Does the date matter? Do we have any particular information?
I'm waiting.
For instance-
Are you saying the date within?
When's the work starting at the Garden Cemetery?
It's undergoing that.
It's under-
If we don't approve this, do we screw up any contract that's already in place? Do we screw, you know, tell me what the consequences are, if, you know, does it-
In your, in your packet, there should be a diaphragm of what, what it looks like. Yeah.
It's the next thing.
Yeah.
I don't know the implications for the contract. They're out there working, I think, you'll see them out there working, it's on monument restoration, on path restoration, it's a big portion of completing the Garden Cemetery this, this-
Yeah.
Year.
Yes.
It's, it's year.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we did have work going on there all winter long, we were able to, but, but it's not the full group.
Right.
It was monument restoration under, uh, uh, under protected canopies that they were doing through the winter. So all I can say is that, uh, we'll talk to the department. I encourage you to schedule your, your, your subcommittee as soon as practical, you know, go, go, go.
I just want to make sure that it doesn't get approved until we have a conversation.
So we try and require you to act for three days.
Yes.
Or thirty?
They send it to you, which is April eleventh, and you receive. So thirty days from April eleventh, you have to add a reject, unless, maybe it's changing the traffic department.
Through the chair, should we be rejecting this today? And what, what would be the implication if we did?
You have it to your next meeting, May eighth.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, do you think that you can schedule a Subcommittee on Conference within that time?
Yeah.
If you want, we could try to schedule a Subcommittee with them, and you can ask them any number of questions that we feel we need to ask them, so.
Do you think, you, do you think it's possible for you to schedule that meeting prior to our next city council meeting?
Provided that we can get people to come and show up on time. I mean, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Can I add to questions?
Let me, let's get some clarification on what we're doing first.
Since we have a rule.
All right. We're going to amend it to send it to conference and request to meet with, and request to meet with the Traffic Commission.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's fine, I can answer.
Okay. All right, next order of business.
Next, next order of business, we have a communication received from Karen Johnson with concerns about the open meeting law regarding the new vocational school in Wakefield.
Seeing no objections, so moved.
Next order of business, we have committee reports. We have a copy of a committee report received from the Subcommittee on Rules and Regulations recommending changes to the city council's rules.
Chair recognizes the chair of the Rules Committee.
Is that me? Okay.
I believe, I, I believe, I believe so.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. So we, this is a longstanding order that's been in existence for, for, for a few months now, and we wanted to actually just sit down, just for the public. We have a, we follow Robert's Rules of Order as our parliamentary procedure here, but we have a, a set of rules that we vote every year when we're inaugurated that supersede those. And some of them are just to kind of maintain order, and so things can run a little smoothly here. And so we had a couple of things that we wanted, it's just really a couple of maintenance things. For example, for councilors, for councilors, when they submit orders, when councilors submit orders, we usually have a deadline of Thursday, and so we're changing it to Wednesday at noon. Another one is about, just kind of, I'm sorry.
All right, Counselor.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Counselor.
The other one was about just highlighting some of the rules that are in our council rules and making sure that we're maintaining decorum here in the city council. Another one is just kind of emphasizing when, when we're, when we're here, someone mentions a counselor by name, they have the right to speak. Really, what we want to do is just maintain professionalism here, make sure we're maintaining decorum, so we can actually get the work of the people done. And I think that sometimes when we get so impassioned with some of the things that we're fighting for, we tend to forget that there are a set of rules that we should be abiding by. So I was grateful to have met with Counselor Taylor and Counselor De Jesus as part of the Subcommittee to make sure that we were just going over Robert's, are the rules that precede Robert's Rules of Orders, who precede Robert's Rules of Orders, to make sure that we can continue to make these meetings run a little more efficient. Yeah. I think that makes sense.
What's your emotion?
Oh, yeah. Can I, I move that we adopt by roll call vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Anyone else want to speak on the matter? Seeing none. Clerk will call the, the roll.
The roll call vote will be on accepting the Subcommittee on Rules and Regulations suggested changes to the council rules. Yes vote will be accepted, no vote will be to reject. Counselor Brown?
Yes, for the adoption.
Counselor Judith Garcia, absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Hubbleburg?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
He in favor? It's passed.
Okay. Next order.
Next order of business, under new business, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson requesting a meeting of the Subcommittee on Inspection Services chaired by Counselor Calvin T. Brown with the Director of Inspection Services, the City Solicitor, the Chief of the Chelsea Police Department, and Community Navigators.
Chair recognizes Counselor Brown.
Communication, Mr. Chair, and if I can, strike out Subcommittee on Inspection Service and make Subcommittee on Conference.
You want amended to Committee on Conference?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, no problem.
I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Yeah, we had this Subcommittee, it was a very interesting topic and a lot of discussion, and I just think that it needs to have all the council members there. There was a lot of input, there was a lot of great discussion about it. And I think as we move forward, we'll invite the city solicitor, chief police, and any else, one that any other council member would like to be there to try to continue to work with ISD and find out how we can improve the quality of life for our residents here in Chelsea. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
I don't under, I understand, but I don't understand this question, this, the Subcommittee. Why are we involving ISD and navigators? What are we going to start tagging? People that are drug users? So here you say you want, with Director ISD and the City Solicitor and Chief of Police Department and the Community Navigators. So the navigators are supposed to be there to guide with people that are drunk, with people with drug addicts. So what are we going to start tagging them? What's ISD going to do? Give them a ticket? So explain to me why we need ISD to go with, why do we need navigators? That's the point I don't get.
Well, that's to give, that's to be able to give this body account of what they're doing out in the community.
I, Mr. Hubbleburg explained to me some of it, what it is. But it, it, it still doesn't resonate in my mind that we need a navigator with ISD.
Thank you, Counselor Hubbleburg, for enlightening my colleagues.
So can I, can I, can I, to the chair, ask the city solicitor, why we need navigators?
She has nothing to do with the order, okay?
Mr. President, may I speak?
Yeah, she have the floor, Counselor.
Thank you so much. I just want to remind the Counselor to my left that we had an Inspection Service Subcommittee on Conference a couple weeks back, or maybe last week, where we were talking about problem properties and folks with substance abuse issues. And so we want to make sure that we're attacking this from all ends, so we can make sure that people who are living on their properties have dignified living. And the only way to really have this conversation is if every department and everyone who's working within these, everything, who, within this system is sitting in that room, so we can actually get the answers we need to make sure that we're holding problem landlords or slum lords accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next order, we have an order introduced by Councilors Lopez and Judith Garcia, order requesting the city manager and DPW commissioner send the electrical company contractor to fix the cement light pole on Hawthorne Street near the bus stop in Bellingham Square.
Chair recognizes Counselor Lopez.
Adopted under suspension, but it's already fixed. I already had an email with Jim Karen, and it's already fixed.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Next order.
Next order of business, we have an order introduced by Councilors Lopez and Judith Garcia requesting the city manager and DPW commissioner send the electrical company contractor to fix the decorative light in front of Duncan on Washington Avenue, Bellingham Square.
Counselor Lopez.
Adopted under suspension. I already talked to Jimmy Karen, and he's going to work on that, to fix it, and all those, uh, uh, those lights that are ornamental lights on Broadway and on City Hall and all And then, all those, those lights that are ornamental lights on Broadway and on City Hall and all around, and they're going to start to work it and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Next order of business, we have an order introduced by councillors Recupero, Vido, Lopez, Taylor, and De Jesus, order that all members of the city council receive a City Hall parking pass to avoid violations while conducting city business.
So, motion on the floor?
Except if I have a communication I'd like to speak on.
Under suspension.
If we do this by roll call vote, I would be opposed to this one.
Roll call.
Yeah, what do we roll call on?
The adoption.
Adoption.
The adoption. You want to speak on the matter? Councillor Taylor?
So, there's some of these things that I think are just about kind of basic fairness. And, you know, I think there might be some sort of misconception about what it is that we're asking. I was here not too long ago, and, you know, I was here on city business, and I go back out and I've got a ticket because I've been there for longer than 30 minutes. You know, we do a lot of, we do a lot of work, we spend a lot of time. It's one reason why I thought it was fair that we had our salaries raised. But I don't think it's fair when we're in here doing the city's business, and look, we're not here to take up space and just, you know, kind of lounge around. We're not staying here all day. We're coming in, we're conducting our business, and then we're leaving. I don't think it's fair that we, on top of that, have to pay a parking ticket because we're in here taking care of the business. I'm not advocating for special parking places for us or anything like that, just a regular city council sticker that precludes us from being ticketed in City Hall. That's it. That's not asking much. And so, I would ask my colleagues to please consider the fairness of it. We're not asking for anything other than to not be ticketed while we're here doing business. That's all. Thank you.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. A while ago, when the other city manager was here, councillor Recupero and I, we put in order, asking for the same thing, at least a permit or a placard or something so we can park in the parking lot while we're doing business here, especially during the city council meetings or subcommittees. When we come here on Tuesdays for subcommittees, or Mondays, the parking lot sometimes is full from all those contractors, people who live in the city. There's no place for us to park. And what they told us, oh, it's not feasible to do it. But ISD has permission to park around everywhere. They can park everywhere, they cannot get tickets. I came here one time, was meeting a member from the State House. When I went out, I got a ticket. I don't think that's fair. So, please consider, so we can get at least a sticker or something so we can park around while we're doing City Hall business only. Thank you.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes. To resonate what my fellow councillor just said, we are not asking for anything special. We're not asking to park anywhere in the city. We don't want to have special privilege. The only thing we want is to be able to park here. Employees have a special permit for them to park. The employees of the city can park and don't get ticketed. What are we? We are the representative of the people. We come here to do the people's business. We shouldn't have to worry every 30 minutes, can I go outside? Is a thing on the meter? We shouldn't have to. If they, employees of the city, can have it, we're not saying, let's give us a permit, we can go everywhere. And I still don't understand, the school department has one. They can go and take care of a school business with a little plaque. We are the people's representatives, I just said, and we want to do the people's business, and we're not allowed to come to City Hall. We can come, but we can't park. Many times, I have to go way down the corner, but that's not even the point. I don't mind. The part that bothers me is they ticketed me. I have to pay. Why? I shouldn't have to pay when I come here. Say, well, it's your fault, you should know the 30-minute limit. Well, if it's 30 minutes for me, why don't you make it for the city employees, 30 minutes? Why, they are special, what's they, not only them, like my fellow councillor said, ISD gets a plaque. They all get plaques. But us, we don't, we're not asking for nothing special. The only thing we're asking for is to be able to conduct the people's business without worrying of getting paid or chasing the meter and go put money on it. That's it. I've been trying for years, and it's always the same thing. The city manager can do it. If he can't, the Parking and Traffic Commission. Maybe we should send a message to them, you know, that we are elected officials. And we should have the opportunity to do the people's job without worrying. That's it. That's the bottom line.
Thank you, Councilor. Councillor Hubbleburg?
So, I'm a big believer that we shouldn't be special, particularly on parking. I get it, parking's a pain in the neck for everyone in the city and almost every place in the city. And I guess I fall on the side of, if it's a pain for people, it ought to be a pain for me, too. You know, I don't think, I don't think I'm special in that regard. I don't think as we talk about parking regulations and as we talk about anything else, you know, next thing you know, we'll be wanting, you know, free jump-the-line passes for parking tickets because our time is special, or, you know, whatever. The point is, I don't think we're special in any way on this. I actually pretty consistently voted against getting paid for this role, and I don't think we should be. So, my general perception of what we do here as public servants is that we should be members of the public who are coming up here to serve. But I don't want anything that separates me from the normal experience. I don't need to be designated special. That's my own personal take. I'll be voting against this one.
Councillor Vido?
I actually disagree with my fellow brother, city councillor at large. I think we're very special. I think the people vote for us for us to do their work. I think that it's not as if though all 11 of us are going to be here at one time during City Hall hours. It's very sporadic when we would come up here to do the City Hall business, but we shouldn't have to go back and forth to make sure that we're not getting tickets. The other thing is, for me, I'm thinking about the intersection of handicap and accessibility because I'm disabled. And so, we only have three parking spots that are always taken. So, if one of those spots aren't taken, I'm in trouble because it takes me a lot longer than the average Joe to walk to City Hall because of my mobility issues and my health than it would for someone else. So, we're not willing to increase handicap parking spots. We're not willing to give, what are we saying to someone like me? I just think that we really, I understand, and I would never want special treatment as a city councillor. I walk a very fine line. I make sure that I'm always moving through with integrity and doing my role. But I should not be penalized for trying to do the job that I was elected to do by the residents of this community. I think like employees get parking permits, we should be allowed the same thing. Like I said, it's not like all 11 of us are going to be here on a Wednesday afternoon when City Hall is open. In the evenings, when we come from City for meetings, the people are usually gone, so it's not really an issue. I think it's completely fair, and I think that obviously there's a much larger conversation that we need to be having about parking, and it's affecting us and impeding with our ability to be able to do the work that we were elected to do. So, I'd be voting in favor, and I would hope that my colleagues would do the same.
Councillor Brown?
Mr. President, I'll be voting against this. Again, I voted against it in the past, and every time it's come up, I've voted against it. It's not sending a good message to the public. I mean, we have many members of the public come here because there's stickers, they have to get stickers, they have to get this and they get tickets. We, you may not feel like you're special, you may not want to be special, but you're asking for special privileges. We should not be getting special privileges. One of the councillors spoke, and they said it right on the money. Not all of us are coming up here at the same time. So, why don't you ask the city manager to get a visitor sticker, that we can have one in our office, and then when one of us or two of us come up here, we have two or three. But you don't need to have a sticker to sit there and do business. I've been coming to City Hall for numbers of times. I got my share of tickets, but I'm sure more residents out there have got tickets also. This is, you know, this in light of what we're trying to do and the message we bring here, it's not that we're special. It's the position that you try to make special. So, I think, again, you know, if you all feel, and if enough of us feel that we need a visitor sticker, why don't we ask the city managers to talk about that as another day? Talk about having a plaque in our office. When one or two of you come up here, you can use that plaque. But to have the authority just to come up here when you want and move in and stay there and do what you have to do and take a space from someone that may want to come and get their license check or their sticker or some other work here in City Hall while we're doing whatever we want to be doing up here, it's unfair. So, I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Yes.
I'll be brief. I was also part of this meeting with my colleagues, Damali and Todd Taylor. I think that, in my opinion and my perspective of it, I am in support of whatever system we can put in place to support the councilors are able to enter the City Hall and, without any worries, continue a conversation that pertains to the public good, right? Whether you're talking about strategies of open communication meetings, or whether you're talking about agenda items, whatever it is, the matter that you're talking about, it is, I think that there has to be some type of system so that we can do that. I can tell you, I have been here multiple times at 7:00 a.m., 8:00 a.m. throughout the day, and as a person who works not just this job, but other jobs in order to make me, and as a person who relies on a vehicle because there's multiple children, pickup, drop-off, you have to get around the city quickly, it makes a difference. And I want to be able to give my community 100% of my time when I am here without having to worry that I am going outside to either pick up another ticket from my collection of tickets or have to move around and look for parking when parking is just not as easy as we wish it was in Chelsea. But again, as my colleague just shared, whatever system we do put in place, it doesn't have to be a sticker, but something that we can, we're not all here at the same time. Many times, it's just three of us that are meeting on random occasions. So, I am happy to, whatever type of amendment, to meet and see if there's something that's more fit that the body would like to see.
If I may speak on the matter, there are alternatives when we do come to City Hall. And I think we should have an opportunity to utilize those other parking spots on Fifth Street or St. Rose. I mean, I'm sure in my neighborhood, everybody who lives in my neighborhood would like to come home and park in front of their house. And sometimes, that's not feasible to do. But the alternative is, if you have to go into any other community, you've got to feed the meter. You know, if you know you're going to come to City Hall and you're going to take more than 30 minutes to do business, you should get in a parking spot that's suitable for you to be able to do that. You know, I have nothing against my colleagues wanting to get a parking pass. I disagree for me. I don't want, I'm not going to support it. Roll call.
Roll call vote? Roll call? The roll call vote will be on accepting the order that all members of the city council receive a City Hall parking pass to avoid violations while conducting city business. A yes vote will be to accept, a no vote will be to reject.
Actually, can I offer an amendment?
Can you offer an amendment?
Can I offer an amendment? Or any other, any other alternative that the city manager sees, like something, I'm okay with bending on what it looks like. I just want to make sure that it is considered. So, if the city manager comes up with this idea where, yeah, we all get this little thing that we could put on a dashboard whenever we come to the city council, but, I don't know, like a visitor's thing or something.
Okay. I need a language.
Move the, councillor Brown?
Before the roll call, I ask that the makers reject the motion, and we go to subcommittee and come up with an idea.
Move the question. So, you objecting to the matter?
Made a motion to move the previous question.
Move to the previous question? That's it?
The motion on the floor is a motion to move the previous question, ending all further debate and amendments on the underlying order, and move that order to an immediate roll call vote. The motion on the floor now is to move the previous question. A yes vote will be to end all previous debate on the order, and no vote will be to not. Councillor Brown?
No.
Councillor Judith Garcia, absent. Councillor Tenere Garcia, absent. Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
No.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes.
Councillor Vido?
Yes.
Councillor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councillor Hubbleburg? Councillor Vega? Absent. Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Five in favor of moving the previous question, three against, three absent. The motion to move the previous question is moved. We move on to the underlying order as introduced by councillors Recupero, Vido, Lopez, Taylor, and De Jesus, order that all members of the city council receive a City Hall parking pass to avoid violations while conducting city business. Roll call vote, yes to accept, no to reject. Councillor Brown? Listen, no? Councillor Judith Garcia, absent. Councillor Tenere Garcia, absent. Councillor Lopez?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
No.
Councillor Recupero?
Yes.
Councillor Vido?
Yes.
Councillor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councillor Hubbleburg? Councillor Vega, absent. Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Five in favor, three opposed, three absent. The order is adopted. Next order of business, we have an order introduced by councillors Vido, Lopez, and Recupero requesting a subcommittee on conference be held with the city manager, parking clerk, and chief of police to discuss the lack of enforcement of illegally parked hitch trailers and commercial vehicles on residential streets.
I would say that the suspension of, no objections, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, so move. You can speak on the matter. You have the floor, councillor.
Thank you. As we know, I live in District, well, the old District Five, and in this area, we have a huge parking issue. And we're seeing hitch trailers, commercial vehicles in our residential streets, and for months, councillor Lopez has been sending out emails. I went back, it goes back over years, emails with the chief of police, with the parking clerk, with the city manager, where they continue to tell us that they're going to be a little bit more active and making sure that they're enforcing the parking restrictions on these folks, but yet, they're still parking in our streets. A vehicle with a hitch trailer takes up two to three parking spots, and it's just not fair that we're nickel-and-diming residents and continuously hammering them with parking tickets but these big, huge vehicles are allowed to just park in our streets. So, I just want us to have a meeting to sit down and get together, and let's talk about what is it that's happening in our streets in terms of parking. I recognize, again, that this is a part of a much broader conversation, but so long as we're not coming up with anything feasible or appropriate to alleviate the parking issue we have in this community, we're going to have to continue to piecemeal this. So, I would love to have a subcommittee to talk with the people involved so we can talk what are the regulations and what it is that we need to do to make sure that we're holding people accountable.
Councillor Lopez?
Yes, thank you. As councillor Vido said, I've been working in this with a previous city manager, city clerk, and the chief of police regarding hitch and hitch trailers, commercial vehicles that don't have stickers. I don't see them getting tickets. And they are taking spaces from our people who come in from a part-time job at 11:00, midnight. And these people, they don't have a permit to park in the city. These commercial vehicles, like I said, trailers, all over the city, they are taking our parking spaces for our people, our hard-working people. And, you know, finally, before I just sent emails, finally, I said, we're going to have to put something on this, so have a conference so they can explain why they don't approach and enforce, give tickets to these violations that are going on around the city. I see cars parking on hydrants. I see cars parking on, do not park on this corner, and they park there because there's no enforcement. So, we need better, something better to enforce this. And that's why I want councillor Vido and I and councillor Recupero, we want to have a conference so they can come and tell us why we're not enforcing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Recupero?
We had an order like this before. We had it almost once. Every year, we have some type of order like this, but yet, it never seems to be enforced. Our city enforces other laws, but it does never enforce the laws that benefit the people that live in our city. We have no spots to park. So, I can't, I know my fellow councillors, some councillors might say, oh, well, that's not true. Well, ask the resident. Do any, you know, go ask your residents, they live in an area where they can't park, to see if they want to have a commercial vehicle or a car with a trailer right on it. See, that takes up three spots. It's already bad enough as it is that you can't park. Go where I live, used to be plenty parking, now there's no parking at all. So, the parking situation is a bad thing. And if you're going to put an order and they say, okay, let's do it, go and enforce it. You have a policeman at night that does it, and you have parking enforcement that does it. They both do it. How many, I would like to know, just how many tickets? When we go to, I want to know exactly how many tickets they have given to trailers parked like that, if there's any ever been given to anyone's like that, where they have a car and a trailer. I want to see how many there is. I'm going to ask that question. How many did they actually give? It's an interesting question, just to see. The order was there many times, so there should be at least one or two in the whole city. I want to see how many there actually is. And I'm going to, there will be one of my requests. Are you going to tell me how many you have issued? Are you gonna tell me how many you have issued?
and busier, can't really come and sit as we can see, or maybe you can't see here at
Thank you, Councilor.
Next order of, next order of business, we have an order introduced by Councilors
home, but, um, you know, not many people showing up to the, to the city council meetings.
Vito, De Jesus and Taylor requesting a subcommittee on conference be held with the city manager,
People in the city will really benefit from being able to really know what's going on.
IT and CCTV to discuss the coordination and expansion of live streaming, subcommittee meetings and virtual meetings.
Councilor De Jesus.
I, I, I really think that when we have a disengaged public, we don't have, um, good
You wanted to top this shenanigans on the suspension of, no objections, so move.
government and when we don't have good government, we, we don't have a good society.
And can I speak? I'd just like to briefly speak on this.
It's really important. I think a lot of people out there are under a lot of misconceptions about what actually
Um, the idea behind this is that, you know, we are looking forward to having more transparency.
occurs here and what the rules are or how things work.
Obviously the community has access to our conversations and the business that we speak
If people could see, not just the city council meetings or the school committee, but the
here while we're on the floor, but there are very important communications that also happen, um, in our, um, adjacent room.
licensing board, the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, I know that there's an
And so for example, this great meeting that we had regarding ISD and updates on conditions
added cost in doing all this, but I really believe it's worth the investment to, to
in apartments and just in general operations, that would have been a great meeting for
try to get people to, to be engaged in their community, to understand how people get permits,
folks to be able to log into virtually. And so that is what this is here, is just simply, um, enhancing more access and providing
to understand, uh, and to actually see what people say and not have to, you know, when
more access for our community to be able to listen in more to the conversations that we have.
Councilor Taylor.
election time comes, oh, I did this, I did this, say. Well, if you're watching, your politicians are going to actually, you know, be held accountable for what they say and do. This is, this is, this is really important and I think we have a lot of disengaged people in Chelsea and we need to get them to see what's going on and to be engaged and, and to be able to, to make good decisions when they go to vote. I, I think that's, that's, that's hugely important. So, um, I look forward to this, um, to this conference and I think that the more transparency that we have, the better it's gonna be and the, the less people are gonna think that there's backroom stuff or shenanigans going on. I, I think we've had enough of that. I'd, I'd like to move forward and, you know, there's no better disinfectant than sunlight, so let's, let's provide that.
Council Recupero.
Hey, I don't have much to say, just one basic thing. It's nice for the people to know exactly who's lying and who's telling the truth up here because by then you'll be able to see who's working for you and who's not working for you or who's really cares or who doesn't. I believe that all the public should know. You ask, 90% of them are not really informed. They assume this is what we do, but this is not what we really do. If you can understand what the purpose of a city council actually is and what kind of power they actually have in this city, then you will understand. That, that is it. I wanted to be more transparent, to see who we are, what we do and what we stand for. That's it. There's no, anybody that argues against that shouldn't be a city councillor.
Council Vito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I just want to say that, you know, when I first came on the council, seven and a half years ago, we, the city council, the only way you could see it was if you had cable TV and through channel three. And since then, we now go Facebook Live, um, our Ricky, wonderful Ricky Valdez now uploads it onto YouTube and those actually get views. I, I get messages all the time when people are actually watching these meetings on Facebook Live. I also advocated for us, for, for some of the, the other stuff, the zoning board, planning board meetings to be public and people, they watch those from home as well. But I think that overall, I think we're, we're reaching a point where we need to have a broader conversation about how do we create the infrastructure that we need to be able to accommodate all of our subcommittee meetings, including these boards and commissions and coming up with a schedule. So about how this works and the, and I, I know Ramon and the, and the IT department and Ricky from CCTV does an amazing job, but I think it's time that we step it up a little bit more so that we can bring, um, government to people at home. People are just, they're tapped out, they're not able to come to meetings and what I have noticed is that the more that we make government accessible, the more people are accessing it. But if we're not creating the infrastructure to do that, then we're cutting people off at the knees and telling them that, you know, not allowing them to get involved. So I really want us to not just sit in a room and just, you know, talk about, about just the expansion of subcommittee meetings, but it, also in addition, these boards and commissions. People also need to be made aware of the decisions that are being made in some of these boards as well. Um, I think, I, I agree with everything that my fellow councillor says and I think it's just time for us to really just, to kind of meet people where they are. People want to know what's going on in government and they deserve to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any public announcements? Council Taylor. Well, you get, well, yeah, you, you'll get, you'll, you'll get your turn when you show up on time.
What is it?
I said, you'll get your turn.
So, um, I just wanted to let everybody know that the Chelsea Rotary is having, um, their annual fundraiser. It's the Chelsea Rotary Derby. We're having it, uh, Tuesday night, May 16th at Anthony's in Walden from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It's a, it, it's a kind of a takeoff on the Kentucky Derby. You buy a ticket, you can dress up and wear your, uh, wear your hats ladies and, uh, we're gonna have mint juleps and, uh, different, uh, different special drinks for people to enjoy. Um, you can buy a hundred dollar ticket, which gives you a chance to win, uh, a, a first prize in the derby, which would be $2,500, second prize is 15, uh, the place and the show would be a thousand dollars. So please, this goes to help fund Rotary scholarships for Chelsea High students that we do every year. So Chel, Chelsea Rotary does a lot to help this, this community and, uh, this is our, this is one of our, our, our annual fundraisers, so please support the Rotary so you can help us support scholarships for Chelsea High students that want to go to college. Okay? Thank you.
Council Lopez.
You go. Oh, you'll go, you'll go.
I'm, I'm on the side.
Yeah, I only have to say, nah. Anybody that calls 311 and it goes to a machine, to the machine, make sure you leave a message because I got a lot of people that called me, they call 311 and nobody answers. I live on the side that I get Boston. Every time I call 311, I get an answer. Mr. Taylor, I call him by name, he lives on the side, which is Everett. And I bet you a hundred dollars when he calls 311, Everett gets it. You live in the middle of Chelsea, you call Chelsea, eh, leave a message. There shouldn't be. People should be, if you want to throw a mattress, what do you want, you gotta throw it on the street? You gotta, you should be able to contact 311, nothing against them, but whatever it is, they need to be on the phone because I'm not complaining about them. I don't throw mattresses that much, but anybody else that's looking for it, complaining. So if they're complaining, there must be a reason. No way should that thing go to an answering machine. It doesn't go in Boston, it doesn't go in Everett and it shouldn't go in Chelsea. That's the bottom line. And if you got an answering machine, leave a message and then record it and tell them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Vito.
I have two things I want to say. The first thing is that for the past couple of meetings that we've had, subcommittees or whatnot, we really have a hard time making quorum and I understand that people have lives and they have other responsibilities, but I just really think that we owe it to the people of the community, the people that voted us to make sure that we show up and at least have a quorum, which means the majority of the council being here, present to be able to do the work of the people. It, it should, it undermines the work of, of, of our supportive staff, of, of the people taking videos. It's, it's not just affecting us. Um, it's just, I think we could do better and, and even if we can't make it because things happen, at least make a phone call and let the president know to be aware because it really just, it's not a good look when only some of us are showing up to meetings. I'm, I just think we could do way better. Um, the second thing I want to say is happy birthday to the love of my life, my daughter. On Saturday, she'll turn the big one seven. She is the apple of my eye and I just want to wish Nina a very happy birthday.
Well, thank you. Wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you.
Council Lopez.
So actually, uh, I was the first one who had, uh, raised my hand, but, uh, the president always, you know, he choose whoever he wants, just, but, uh, my, my, my thing that I want to say is that, uh, on Saturday, we had a Earth Day celebration and we had a good crowd coming out and, um, I just want to say to the people in Chelsea that, uh, what I saw a lot on the streets are cigarette butts, uh, beer and bottles, cups and a lot of dog waste. Please, if you have a dog, pick it up. You know the rules, when you, you get a dog, you should pick it up. And in the area of Shamet from Ballingham, Central Avenue, all the way to the Innes, all the way to the, down the Willow Street, down Highland Park, there's dogs, there was dog waste all over the place and, uh, we, we can do better. And, you know, if you don't come and clean up and help on Earth Day, at least clean up when you dog. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, just brief, actually on Saturday was Earth Day. The cleanup and celebration was organized by Green Roots in collaboration with the city of Chelsea's DPW. The four days leading up to Earth Day, they planted trees throughout Chelsea, again organized by Green Roots in the city, DPW. We had approximately 350 people participants in a week's event, which included planting 50 street trees, cleaning up over a dozen locations in Chelsea and East Boston, removing hundreds of pounds of trash. And the volunteers were the Chelsea Black Community, the MWRA, Neighborhood Developers and their Community Enchantment Team, Chelsea Community Connections, Blueprint Medicines that also sponsored lunch, Central Presente, East Boston Community Soup Kitchen, Chelsea Community Gardens, several local churches, local and state officials, including myself, Inio Lopez, Roberto Jimenez, Gabriela Coletta and representatives from Senator Edwards' office and Rep. Mandano's office. The event was covered by our own Chelsea Community Cable, Ricky Valdez. And want to thank those who did come out and participate. Thank you. Any other announcements? Any moments of silence? Council Brown.
Yeah, so I got two, um, two very well-known folks in Chelsea. One is Airman Martinez, Raza, 2005 graduate, um, graduated the same class with my daughter. Um, both of them went to the United States Air Force. Um, she's a veteran, she passed her life this past month. Um, another good person, um, well-known in the community, David Rodriguez, um, family's been here lifelong, Chelsea resident. Both of them were very, um, known in the city of Chelsea. Want to thank, um, Airman Rock, um, Airman Martinez for her service, for her commitment to our safety and also to our family and my prayers and thoughts go out to both families.
Any others? Seeing no other business before this, Council, we're adjourned.